Okay, welcome to today's group breath work class. Thanks for being here. I can't believe we are in the completion of 2021. What a wild, wild year. I'm sure a lot of you have had to get through some pretty big stuff. We all have, so I hope for today's session that you can just sit back and receive this. Today's going to be very gentle. If you have any prayers or intentions for today, you're more than welcome to write it in the chat box. Let me know. Before I do these group sessions with all of you, I have to do a breathwork session on myself to get ready and prepare for today. And the first 15 minutes or so, I had a lot of anger releasing from the last three weeks of stuff. I didn't even know that I was angry. So for today, if you feel fidgety, you know, if you right when you start breathing, you might start feeling stuff that your body is carrying. It doesn't mean that that's you. It doesn't mean those thoughts are you. Just keep doing the best you can to breathe right along with me. And it'll naturally melt away. That's why I love breathwork. You don't have to change anything about you. You don't have to say positive affirmations. Just breathe. Just keep focusing on your breath in and breath out. And that's why I'm here. I'm just gonna help coach you through it. So we're gonna be breathing for a full hour. Please, if you can, try to stay the full time, or at least get 50, 45 to 50 minutes in. A lot of miracles come in for people right near the end of the session. And that's when most people want to leave. But if you can stay, no worries if not. You can always come back to the recording later. So, okay, we're gonna drop right into this session today. So please be sure that you are just like ready to receive. Lie down flat on your back, pillow underneath your neck. Make sure your neck is not too high up. You wanna be flat and just have your throat open. And I like to put a couple pillows underneath my legs. And definitely have a blanket. You might get chilly. Sometimes when people, like let's say if you've had a lot of fear. I mean, that's a no brainer. There's been a lot that's been thrown at us and our whole lives have changed, changed for the most part. So all those thoughts that, you know, the all the thoughts and the mind racing with the fear thoughts and what's gonna happen and this and that and blah, blah, blah. So sometimes the body can get chilly and cold, so you want a blanket. And you're more than welcome to write in the chat box and just let me know. You know, if you feel really tingly, or if you feel uncomfortable, just let me know. It will pass though, so just do your best to breathe right along with me. Okay, I think we're ready to go. If you have any questions, let me know. If this is your first time, welcome. If this is your seventh or eighth time, thanks for being here. And what a, what a journey this year has been. So there's no such thing as doing this perfectly. Just take it one breath at a time. Okay, here we go. So whenever you're ready, you may close your eyes. And let's just take a few deep loving breaths in through the nose. Okay, you're gonna do great. And again, let's just kind of signal to your body that we're gonna be taking this time to breathe. So take three slower, deeper breaths. So inhale. Soft exhale. Breathing in. Soft exhale. And one more slower, deeper breath. And my prayer is for each and every one of you that as you're breathing, that you see exactly what you need to see. And that your body gently let go. And just gently dissolve anything that it's storing from the last few days, few weeks, the last few years even. So we're just gonna take it one breath at a time. So whenever you're ready, breathe right along with me. You're gonna inhale. Soft exhale. Breathing in. Soft exhale. Inhale. And exhale. And right now, we're just getting the body warmed up. It doesn't matter if you do this in through your nose or your mouth. We hold our breath so much, so we have to like let the body know that it's okay to breathe. So fidget around, cough, drink some water, whatever you gotta do, and then find your breath. And soft exhale. And just doing your best is all that matters right now. We breathe in. Soft exhale. Great job. And some of you may start to feel and you may start to feel lightheadedness. And you breathe in. And soft exhale, just letting it go. Try not to take your symptoms or whatever you're thinking personally. Just breathe. We inhale. Soft exhale. You're doing great. Breathing in. Breathe out. Most of you might not be able to take a deep breath in. And it might not sound the way that I breathe. Don't worry about it. By the time we're done, your, your body will be able to fully breathe. A lot of us have had to keep going through all the emotions, through all the triggers, the worries, the fears, the doubts, the self doubts, just everything. So only breathe in to where you can feel the breath go down your body. And that's enough. Okay, this session is designed to slowly open everything up because we hold our breath so much. So please be very loving and kind with each breath that you breathe. So we inhale. Soft exhale. You're doing great. All that matters is that you showed up. And that you're even trying. The fact that you are here during this time on the planet means that you are a total warrior, an earth angel. And so we breathe in. And breathe out. And right now, during this first part of the session, just let your body feel, let it do its thing. And then breathe in. Breathe out. It doesn't feel good to feel, does it? But you got this. We're all in this together. Okay, so you breathe in. And soft exhale. Inhale. And exhale. Breathe in. Breathe out. Inhale. Exhale. And eventually your body will get used to this. Just honoring where you are right now. You're kicking booty. Breathe in. And breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. Being very gentle, very kind and loving with each breath that you breathe. So during this part of the session, try not to figure it all out. Try not to change the moment or the body symptoms or the thoughts. Just breathe. It's gonna do all the work for you. You're doing great. So whenever you're ready, now you're sinking a little bit deeper into the breathwork session and your body's ready to go, believe it or not. So whenever you're ready, try to inhale about 30% more, even though this can totally stink. You're gonna feel so good by the time we're done. We just have to get through that stored emotions and beliefs and blah, blah, blah. The mindless stuff. So do your best to breathe right along with me. Inhale 30% more. Blast open, soft exhale. Just do three more like that, okay? Really big. Just go for it. Don't be afraid of breathing, okay? Don't be afraid of your body symptoms or the emotions that are on their way out. It's on, it's on its way out. Breathe in. There you go. And see if you can breathe into your heart and into your belly. See if they can open up together. Inhaling. Soft exhale. Inhale. Soft exhale. You're doing great. Just do the best you can. Breathing in. And wherever you are right now during this process, I want you to just send some loving and supportive breaths. And put it into you right now. No one else, just you. Give yourself that love and the support and the worthiness. And that self-care that you need right now. Even if people don't understand you, even if you don't understand what's happening in your life right now, there is a much higher plan. So breathe in. Soft exhale, letting it go. And this type of breathwork is very gentle, so please try to be loving and gentle on yourself with each breath that you breathe. Breathing in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. And it's really easy during this part of the session to try to control your thinking or be like, I shouldn't be thinking about this. Or like, you know, but then again, let your mind wander. Let it go wherever it's going. But keep, it's all about that big breath in. Like, don't judge your feelings. Don't judge where the mind goes. Breathe in. Breathe out. It's part of the session. It'll clear out and then you'll really be able to relax here in the next few minutes. Inhale. And exhale. You're doing amazing. I'm so proud of you. Breathe in. Breathe out. Breathing in. Breathe out. And now during this part of the session, just taking, checking in with your body. Notice if your throat is starting to close a little more. Notice the sensations. We're so strong and powerful. We're not gonna take it personally. We're just gonna take three deeper breaths in and just honor what the body's doing. Let it get dizzy. Let it get tingly. Take a sip of water. Take a break if you need to. If this is too much, you're carrying so much. So just take a break if you need to. Your timing is perfect. So I want you to trust yourself with each breath that you take. Trust yourself in what you need right now. And if you can, breathe in. Soft exhale. Yeah. You are so powerful. You are strong. You are capable. God has you. You are safe and always protected. You're always in the right place with the right people in the right timing. It's all happening for you with each breath that you breathe. With each breath that I breathe, it's safe for me to let go of the fear. It's safe for me to let go of the triggers. If someone upsets me, it's safe to let it go. Just breathe. If someone hurts my feelings, I'm gonna take three deeper breaths in. And come back into my heart. Love is the only thing that's real. God's love, God's light. Just breathe it in right into your heart. Our bodies are like sponges, so it just like, it can take it all in if you're not careful and if you don't practice, do your practices. So breathe in. Breathe out. You're doing great. Whatever your beliefs are, whatever works for you, okay? So breathe in. And it's like the higher thought is, it's just safe to let it go. I don't need to store this stuff. My body is not responsible for carrying the weight of the world, everyone's burdens. I don't need to carry this. Okay? So we breathe in. I don't need to carry any longer other people's processes. Like what works for me might not work for you. So you know, when we carry, we really care for people and we love them so much. And we can see like what they need support or love. We can see like, oh, well, here, why don't you try this? And then it kind of backfires. So and then our bodies kind of carry that, that gut punch if they don't receive, you know, that love and support. We just care, we just care for one another, right? Or those conversations that you have that might make you upset. So just letting yourself be in your body with the feelings and the sensations. And let's send three loving breaths and pull yourself and all that love that you give to others and all the support. I want you to pull it back into your chest and into your belly. And I want you to give it back to you. Because that's all we can do right now. We can only really breathe for, for ourselves, ourselves and our temple. Our body is the temple. So we breathe in. And you're doing great. Now this is the part of the session where people really start to feel activated. And I'm gonna stop talking for a minute. And let's just keep that breath going. Here's something that will support you. If any of you are feeling congestion, headaches, dizziness, upper body stuff, breathe in through your nose. Soft exhale. Breathe in deeply, like blow up your upper body like a balloon. Soft exhale. Keep that going. If you have upper body stuff going on, or if you're really in the head, it's okay, let it be. If you have from your chest down, if you have symptoms going on in your back, in your hips, in your organs, your knees, wherever, it means the body, it's, it's receiving your breath. It's getting all that good oxygen and it's working. So you're not alone. We're doing this together. God has you. So I can get more oxygen in when I breathe in through the mouth. So I'm gonna do the mouth breathing. It doesn't hurt to do this for a while, so don't worry about it. Nose versus mouth. Just breathe, okay? So we're gonna inhale. Exhale. Breathing in. And exhale. You're doing great. Keep it going. You are loved and supported with each breath that you breathe. You are loved and supported with each breath that you breathe. Let yourself go on this gentle and loving journey. Breathing in. Breathing out. Let your thoughts go where they go. Let your symptoms do their thing. I want you to just trust your body right now. It's gently releasing. We do ask with each breath that you breathe that it gently lets go of anything that's not serving you. It's almost like a really deep forgiveness. When you breathe, it just eventually through the session, it just lets all the past stuff go. So you can be free and live right now and be happy. And be happy again. So breathing in. Breathe out. It's safe for me to trust myself completely. It's safe for me to trust myself through this process. I can do this. I got this. Life has me. God has me. Yeah, fidget if you need to squirm, stretch your legs. Do whatever you gotta do. And so you're gonna inhale for one, two, three seconds and then let it go. Don't hold your breath. Inhale for soft exhale. Inhaling for one, two, three seconds. Soft exhale. Inhale for one, two, three seconds. Soft exhale. Inhale for one, two, three seconds. Soft exhale. Just know that no matter what you've been through, you're perfect just as you are. You're innocent. You're learning everything that you need to learn for your highest good, for your sole purpose here. So breathing in. And exhale, soft exhale. And now during this part of the session, your inhale, it should almost it should almost sound like a really gentle wave coming into the shore. So it'll sound like this. Kind of like you're rocking. Like you're a newborn baby. Okay, I want you to just be as gentle on yourself as your body is letting go and releasing. Be as gentle on yourself as a newborn baby. You wouldn't be hard on a newborn baby. You wouldn't yell or speak, you know, unkind words. You would just give it all the love that you can. So as you breathe, just be very loving to yourself as your body is letting go. Inhale. Exhale. And for some of you, this is a really intense part. Like you might feel completely out of control, which is actually a good thing. That's when the healing can, or you know, that's when the body can do its thing. So as a loving reminder, take three deeper breaths down through the body. Open up your symptoms. Like how much oxygen can you get into your body? Even though it can be really intense. You are safe. You are loved. You are protected. It's all gonna be okay. If you're feeling dizzy right now, it's your, the, all the mind stuff releasing. It's your upper body opening up. So let, let the mind open. Breathe through the nose. Soft exhale. Like if you get dizzy and it frightens you a little bit, catch the dizziness with your breath in. Expand it open with your breath in. Just doing that three times and slow the breath down. It'll help with the dizziness. Pause, drink some water if you need to. Come back to it when you're ready. Isn't it pretty wild and amazing what you're feeling right now? Like that's the body thinking that we need to carry all this stuff in there. So, um, in just a minute, we're gonna do our first speaking process. And we're, we're all, we are already a little over halfway through. We're almost done with the session, believe it or not. So, um, stretch, cough. You might have phlegm coming up. Drink some water. Trust it, trust the symptoms, okay? It's clearing. You're gonna feel amazing by the time we're done. Okay, so let's breathe for just two minutes. Big inhale. Soft exhale. Big inhale. Soft exhale. It's safe to go for it now. Get it. Power through. Big inhale. Soft exhale. In. Out. Breathing in. And some of you might, you might notice a change in your breathing. You might have to start to breathe faster. So just let your body breathe how it wants to. Um, the other day when I was doing this, I literally was in the fetal position. I just wrapped myself up and I was breathing pretty hard because I just had so much sadness and anger releasing. And I just kind of held myself and curled up. And I let my body breathe how it wanted to breathe and it, it released within five minutes. So trust your breathing, trust your body, trust yourself. It's something we're not taught to do. And you are safe and loved and protected. Breathe in. Breathe out. Inhale. Exhale. Now is a great time. We're gonna do the speaking process. This will help move out the symptoms. Any worries, fears or doubts that's surfacing. It's part of the session. Does, that doesn't mean that's who you are. Okay, so what you're gonna do is take a big, deep breath in. And just kind of check in with your body. What does it feel like right now? And you'll get a word. You know, check in. What does your body feel like right now? And then send a loving breath and open up the feeling. Okay, and then repeat after me. If the feeling in my body could speak. Say that loud again. If the feeling in my body could speak. What it's trying to say is and then speak out the first thing that comes to you. And if you can, right, you're more than welcome to let me know in the chat box. Some of you might not be able to move your body right now or your hands. Uh, you don't have to share if you don't want to. And then take three deeper breaths down through the body. We'll do this process again. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask you a different question. I'm just kind of like asking those questions that helps your body just let go of some stuff. So repeating after me, take a big, deep breath in first. And repeat after me. If the feelings or the sensations in my body could speak. What it's really wanting to say is and then what's the first thing that comes to you? What's the first thing you think about? What's the first thing you see or feel? And if you don't get anything, that's okay too. You'll have, you'll have it down by the end of the session. You know, a lot of us are having to push through so much and be so strong during this time. And keep going. And you know, are we taking enough time, just a few minutes a day to just breathe and to check in and being like, how are you doing today? How was today for you? And let's just honor the feelings and the emotions that are stirred up. And here's what you do. You just find your breath in. And you keep sending yourself that love and the support that you need to get through this moment. Everyone's doing amazing. We're almost through this. Okay. Let's ask your body another question. So let's breathe, breathe in. And exhale. Inhale. And exhale. And repeat after me. If the feeling or the sensations in my body could speak, what they, what, what they need to let go of is and speak out the first thing that comes to you. So keep breathing while I speak. I'll give you an example. If that was kind of hard to do, it's okay. Just breathe in. And breathe out. If you didn't get anything. Okay, so I'll give you an example. If the feelings or the sensations in my body could speak, what they really need to let go of is anger, self doubt, fear, you know, I just just speak out anything that comes to me. Okay, I wanna ask your body another question. Okay, you're doing great. Everyone's doing really beautifully. Taking a big, deep breath in. Repeat after me. If the feelings or sensations in my body could speak, what they want me to know is and then what's the first thing that comes to you? And then take three deeper breaths in to activate that truth for yourself. Breathing in. Breathe out. Inhale. Exhale. You are safe. You are loved. You are supported with each breath that you breathe. You got this. You can do it. You are strong. You are capable. You are powerful. You have it all from within to do it all. God has you. Breathing in. Breathe out. Breathing in. Breathe out. Take three deeper, powerful breaths down through your body. I mean, blast open your body even more. I want you to be able to feel the power of your breath flowing down and opening up every cell, every blood vein, every muscle. Just keep opening up your body. You are so safe. You got this. Nothing bad's gonna happen. You're meant to be here. You're supposed to be here. It's very interesting. The other day while I was doing a breathwork session on myself, I kept having this thought coming in. I don't wanna be here and I don't wanna breathe. So we're in a very interesting time where I'm like, oh my gosh, I can't believe I'm thinking like that. But you know, when you see certain things and you're like, come on, really? And get me off this planet. Are you serious? Ah, you know, just any annoyances. And then when we're thinking those subconscious thoughts or even speaking it into existence, man, we gotta be so careful now during this time of our lives. Because the body feels it. The body can carry it. So even if we're just joking. So take three deeper breaths. It's safe to be here. I want to breathe. Now those thoughts that we have, they're not ours. It's just if we hold our breath a lot or if there's certain toxins floating in the body or things feel toxic at home or at school or at work, it can really just kind of close us down. So use the breath to open you up. So it makes you want to be here during this time. It's safe to be here. You're supposed to be here shining your light, being as beautiful and as handsome as possible. As strong as possible. We need you as strong as possible through this time. And if you need to take a break, take a break and rest. We also need you to rest. God's warriors, breathing in. Breathe out. Inhale. Exhale. Be as gentle on yourself as possible, please. If you want things to flow in your life, just find your breath. When you flow from the top of your head down to your toes, when you feel that, um, the space and the openness, and that's okay if it's, you're not there quite yet. We're almost done. But just imagine opening up your body. Like just keep opening it up and creating that flow. Cause once you have that flow and you really feel who you are without anyone else telling you or programming, then your life starts to flow because you're connected. You, you know who you are. It's safe for you to trust yourself. It's safe for you to speak up in the moment. And, um, just find your breath, breathing in. Soft exhale, letting it go. Inhale. Exhale. You're doing great. With each breath that I breathe, I love myself. I forgive myself for being so hard on myself. I'm willing to forgive others. They have their stuff. I have mine. All I can do is breathe for myself right now. They have their stuff. I have mine. All I can do is breathe for myself right now. Breathing in. And exhale. In. Out. Breathing in. And exhale. And you know, for a lot of us, it's not comfortable to be in these bodies. I've been sober a little over a year and a half and it's, uh, it's pretty uncomfortable. Um, I know there's some uh, young, there's a younger generation here on, on the call too. And there's younger kids on here. And so, you know, when you're a kid, it's so uncomfortable, right? So just use the breath to open up the uncomfortable feeling. Being an adult, getting older, it can be uncomfortable. Doing the work you do can be very uncomfortable. So we just invite three big breaths in. You got this. You can do it. It's okay to be uncomfortable. Breathing in. It's okay if you're not okay with yourself right now. Just let it pass. You're gonna love yourself so much by the end of the session. You're doing great. Breathing in. Breathe out. Breathing in. Breathe out. You're doing great. Oh, how exciting. We're in the last chapter of the session. The hour is going by very quickly. We breathe in. Look at you warriors. Look at you go, earth angels. It takes a very strong person to be able to do this. So, congrats. Breathing in. Breathing out. Try not to figuring it all out right now. We're just breathing. Let the thoughts go, let they, let them wander and breathe in. Soft exhale. Breathing in. Soft exhale. Let yourself receive this last chapter. You've made it this far. Yeah, and as you breathe, just being really kind to yourself in this last part of the session. I'm sure everyone is feeling very activated. Some people, like if you take prescriptions, you might feel really numb. So if you do feel numb and tingly, just open it up. Don't be afraid of the body and what you're feeling. You're gonna feel so good here in the next 10 minutes. Grab a sip of water if you need to. You're doing so great. Inhale. Fidget, stretch, cough. Do what you gotta do. Adjust and come back into it. Let yourself relax. And for those of you who have been doing this through the nose, I invite you to do this in and out from the mouth. Go for it. You'll release a lot more if you do this in and out through the mouth. That last little push. See if you can match my breathing. You can do it. Do it right along with me. You might hate me for this last part, but you're gonna love me afterwards. Breathe in. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Exhale. It's almost like, how much can you receive? If God was like, hey, I want to give you all this strength and power, you'd be like, yes, give me everything that I need, please. And you would just totally breathe it in. So this last part, I want you to just go for it like never before. I don't care if you scream or kick or cry. And it totally stinks. Just keep going for it. We're almost done. You are alive. You are beautiful. You are powerful. You are strong enough to get through this. This is gonna really open up your creativity. In the next few days, you're gonna be, um, all these amazing ideas are gonna come through to help you on your path with your work. Um, with whatever you do here. It's gonna help you. It's gonna help you get organized. It's gonna help you stay, your immunity build, get healthier. Go for it. Let yourself feel that aliveness. That's all within you. Let yourself feel it. You can handle this. Nothing bad's gonna happen. Normally when I breathe like this, I start to think about a lot of food and other things, like, can't wait for the session to be done so I can eat. Pull in some more breath. Keep focusing on that breath in, like squirm through it, whatever you gotta do. Yell, yell into a pillow if you need to, get the energy out of the body. Let yourself cry if you need to. Breathe in. Soft exhale. Inhale. Exhale. If you can't handle this anymore, it's safe to let it go. Let your body know that it's safe to let it go. All these feelings or sensations, it's safe to just let it go. Breathe in. Breathe out. Okay, one more minute, everyone. You are safe and loved and protected. Breathing in. Look at how connected you are. You are so strong, so capable. You know exactly what to do. I want you to honor exactly where you are right now. And we're gonna check in in just a minute. We're gonna check in with those symptoms and the feelings. Oh, you are, you all are so amazing. You just breathed for a full hour. Please do not rush out of this unless you have to. Please just hang out with me as, um, I have to gently kind of bring you out of the session. I'm sure you can really feel the body now. Okay, take three loving breaths down into the body. And repeat after me. If the feelings or sensations in my body could speak, what they really want to say is, and speak the first thing that comes to you. The feelings or sensations in my body could speak. What it's really wanting to say is, and let me know what you get. And this takes about, you know, five minutes or so to come out of the session. Stretch a little bit, grab a sip of water. Um, if you're new here, or if you, you still might be releasing. So just hang out, hang out with me for just a minute. Let's ask the body, one more thing, just if there's anything else it needs to let go of. Take a big breath in. And repeat after me, body, or here we go, repeat after me. What I really, really need to let go of is, and then speak the first thing that comes to you. Okay, everyone. Uh, some of you might have tingling in your hands. Repeat after me. If the tingling in my hands could speak, what it wants me to know is, and then just speak it out, you know, speak it out of the body. Okay, everyone. And take three deeper breaths to complete. You are all done. If there's anyone in here who is feeling fear or trapped or confused, repeat after me. If the fearness, is that even a word? If the fearness in my body could speak, or how about this, if the fear in my body could speak, what it needs to say is, I got you. You can handle this. Okay, and I want you to speak out the first thing that comes to you. Some of you might feel dizzy. Some of you might feel really good. So everyone's just gonna be in a different place. Good job, Eva. Good job making it through. Everyone, that is not easy to do, but they do get easier. You are more than welcome. Um, this is a really, if, if a lot of you are still in it, just take a few deep breaths and kind of hang out with us. Sometimes people like to share how they're doing. You are more than welcome to unmute yourself. And you know, it might take another five minutes or so to just kind of come back and collect yourself. So, um, with anyone, if it's not too soon, if you'd like to share, you are more than welcome to unmute yourself and just express, cause everyone, we're all going through so much and it's, it's very healing to hear how that was for you and just being raw, you know? So if anyone would like to share, you're more than welcome. Everyone did beautifully. I feel very relaxed. I hope everyone feels released. If you don't, just, just hang out for just a couple more minutes. Your body's still released, uh, it's still releasing. Okay, Eva, I'm gonna unmute you. Ask to unmute. Oops. Hi, beautiful.
That was absolutely amazing and insanely powerful. And like, every time I feel like you were speaking to me exactly through, through the entire time. That was amazing. I, my voice sounds different to myself. I feel like I got that much out of it, seriously, like, it was just so powerful. it was just so powerful. And I feel like I was searching for a couple solutions. And I feel like I got the solutions, but I also got the reminder that like, I just have to breathe whenever I feel like I don't have the solution and then the clarity will flow from there. Instead of seeking a solution, going into, you know, that seek, the breath will actually bring in the clarity. So that was powerful. I felt unbelievable. Um, releases in my body, like I feel like it was the residual, it was like the end, the, like stepping into the place I need to be is just here. It's here. Yeah, so thank you so much. I'm so grateful. I love you so much.
I love you too. Thank you for sharing.
I'm having a happy tear. I love you so much. Thank you.
I love you too. I know. Thanks for being here. Thanks for sharing.
Like desperately needing to have so many things to do, and then I was like, nothing's as, as important as right now. So I stayed, but I, I am gonna, um, have to log off now.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad you, I'm glad you stayed for the, the session.
It was so amazing.
Yeah, it's, it is so important that we just take an hour to just breathe. Cuz we have to be, you know, it just brings us back. Oh yeah, this is what's real, you know? This is what's, this is what's important.
Yeah.
Okay, enjoy your day. I love you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm so grateful. Thank you so much.
You too. Thank you. All right, I think now anyone else can unmute yourself. Now I, I switched the settings. Go for it, Mary Ann.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you so much. You're amazing.
Oh, thank you.
You have such a beautiful presence. You hold us so, so strongly. I've been doing, I've emailed you already, so you know, but I've done your free session three times this week. And it clears so much. And so today was more like, the symptoms were less difficult because I sort of prepared. And today there was just so much light and so much power and just this voice was like, I am light, I am love, I am peace. And there were difficult moments, but the light was so much stronger. And it's been so much about like, safe to use your voice. You're here to use your voice, to share your light, to share your peace. And it just feels amazing. So I'm so grateful I found you. Thank you so, so much for sharing your beautiful gift with us.
Uh, thank you so much. I, I just love it. Thank you for emailing and, um, isn't that amazing? Like, yeah, you, you've done, this is your, is this your fourth session in this week?
I really went for it.
I totally relate though. I've done a few, I've done two or three breathwork sessions this last week. Cuz I had so much my body was carrying. I'm like, man, I gotta be ready for Saturday's session, like, cuz a lot of breath workers, uh, facilitators, they don't do the full breathing, like the full hour with everyone. They just kinda talk and chime in here and there. And so I'm like, man, I don't know how I'm gonna get through that Saturday session. And so I was shocked from today that I was able to breathe almost the full time with everyone because I released so much gunk this last week. So, and that is how powerful it is. The more you can do this, the more stress and triggers it releases, and then there you go. Then from here on out, you'll only experience love and peace and goodness and light, and you'll just, you'll just take it all in. So, bravo. You are a warrior. Four sessions in a week. You get it, girl. Thank you so much. I appreciate you. Thank you. And everyone who was on here, bravo. This is not easy to do. We, we, um, but if you can just gently take your time through it, you can, you'll, it gets better, I promise. I've been doing this for 14 years. It does get better. Um, would anyone else? Zoe, did you get to breathe? You did?
Can you say thanks, Miss Kim?
Thank you.
Thank you.
She lasted like 10 minutes, but it was great, wasn't it? There you go.
That's amazing.
Big breaths, huh? I was in and out for that one, but it still felt amazing. I still feel relaxed and, yeah, it's a sacred place that you hold. I'm really thankful for you.
Thank you.
Can you say thanks?
Thanks.
Thank you, Zoe. Oh, so sweet. The future. You are the future, Zoe. I love you. Zoe, are you listening to the dolphin lullaby? Do you still listen to that?
Listen to the dolphin lullaby? You do, yeah. It helps us take deep breaths before bed, huh?
Good.
Hey, thank you again.
Thank you, Erin. Love you beautiful. Okay. There's always like a couple people in this last part. You, everyone who's on here, you can go whenever you need to. Um, there's always a couple people, um, who are still kinda in it. So, and it's like, you might get annoyed, like, well, why don't I feel good, you know? Or how come I don't feel that way? And so your body's still releasing, that's why. It's just releasing that last nugget. That last part. So, um, you're more than welcome to write me in the chat. And let me know how you're doing. I'd love to support you through that last release. And everyone, if you want to, just take a few deep breaths. Yeah. Oh, man, I hope all of you do something really special for yourself the rest of the day or this evening. Thank you, Natasha. Natasha? Um, thank you. Would anyone, anyone else, is anyone else brave enough to share? I'm going to, it takes me two hours to upload these videos and then I'll email the sessions within the next three to four hours. They'll, they'll be in your, in your email. So you can breathe through this whenever you want. Thank you. I so appreciate you. I feel like I finally reconnected my brain to my body again. It feels huge for my healing journey. Oh, awesome. I'm so, I'm so grateful. Yeah, thank you, Cassie. Get it, girl. It's number two breathwork session in a week. Get it. Good for you. Um, if any of you have questions for me, please let me know. Thank you for being here. This, um, this gives me purpose doing these group sessions. It gives me something to look forward to. And you just have no idea how much it means to me as well that you're all here and we're doing this together. So, um, if you ever need more breathwork or different sessions, you can go to my YouTube, Breath with Kimberly Rose. I've got like 10 sessions on there, free, full guided sessions, just like this, at least 10 of them. Um, I have breathing downloads. I'm gonna do a sale for those of you who are on here, 20% off. So I'll be emailing all that in the next couple days. So if you wanna keep your breath, breathwork practice going, I mean, even I have to put on videos and I have to put on, um, breathing downloads to keep me, cuz it's hard to do it on your own. So it just, it keeps bringing me back to the breath. So, um, it's very supportive. It makes it easier. Um, something that I like to do, when I wake up, I breathe for five minutes. Before I go to bed, I breathe for five minutes. So, um, that really helps set the tone for the day. It helps me knock out at night. Um, so if you have any questions, please let me know. Reach out to me on Instagram. I love hearing how people are doing. Um, if you feel like this was impactful, sharing your stories on Instagram, let people know how powerful this is. Um, healing and working on your health can be really expensive. That's why I, I only charge, you know, I just keep this so affordable, so everyone can access this. And then if they can't do the sessions or the group sessions, there's free breathwork for you. So, um, okay, would anyone else like to share before we go? Any big, anything big that you see, saw, felt? And you will be, you will be releasing, you will notice a lot of subtle changes over the next several days. So please give yourself like a full week. Sometimes, um, I'm so strong and I can be such a warrior and have to push through that, um, I'm pretty good at numbing out. And so when I do a breathwork session like this, um, I might, I might not feel it, like I might not have a good cry until several hours later. Like, let's say for example, I feel good now and I go and take all my day, and then I just kind of like, get really angry out of nowhere. That's from the session. So all that oxygen for a full hour. And then it's, it's gotta release somehow. That's why we ask the body to just gently release. Like it can be gentle, so you don't like explode on someone. So, um, I always have a good cry after a session, some hours or within a day or two, I, I get a good, good release. That doesn't happen all the time, but, um, and then I noticed I was numbing out the last few weeks through food or shopping. And I was like, whoa, I'm numbing out. This is not good cuz I have this session coming up. So, I've been jumping river, right behind my house. I've been jumping in the cold to shock and to feel everything. So, I did that three times this week and then I did a breathwork session. Um, so then I can hold the session together, so to speak. And be strong enough to, to get through the session and to, to get everyone through the session. So, what's my point in saying this? Um, just give yourself a few days and be really, really good to yourself. Okay. I think we're gonna, we're gonna head on out. So thank you so much. I, I love you. I appreciate you. And I'll be posting in the next couple weeks for January's next group session. So if you need anything, reach out. If you'd like to do a one-on-one, they, if that was powerful, a one-on-one is 100 times more powerful. And, um, they're really special and, um, one more thing. I forgot it. Anyway, all of you did amazing. Oh, give breathwork three tries. Do three sessions if you did not feel anything from this. Give it three tries. Don't give up on it. Um, this is one, the, one of the most powerful tools that, that God has given us and, um, pre-COVID, I would do one breathwork on my session, one breathwork session on myself every three months. Or I'd go hire my breathwork coach. And now I do one hour a week, most of the time, or every other week. That's how much we're going through, right? And it just keeps you so grounded and solid right here in yourself. So, this is what I've had to do and a whole bunch of other stuff, but anyway. Okay, all my love and support. Thank you. Take care. Have a great rest of your day or evening, wherever you are in the world.